We give you thanks for all the blessings that we do have. Again, we ask that you'll be with us during our time together today. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Okey doke. All right, we will move along. Next, what we will have is the appearance of citizens. There's some new folks out there, so I feel like I say this a lot, but we do have a moment where the public can address county commission for up to three minutes on items that are on or not on the agenda. We ask that you come to the podium, that you state your name. I am going to, what I want to do is, in light of just a lot of discussion that we've had last month, I just wanted to read this for everybody who's in the audience, for us as commissioners, just as a reminder. Please bear with me. Rule four, comments by county commissioners, public officials, and citizens must be professional and respectful, and must refrain from outbursts, profanity, questioning motives, and personal attacks. The chair can limit comments to those relevant to the item to be voted on, and can stop inappropriate, disruptive, or overly repetitive speakers. So what I also want to address is items that are not necessarily in our rules, but by our rules, we default to Roberts Rules of Order. In the Roberts Rules of Order, there's specific language in there, and there's also just a common practice that the chair is required to keep decorum in its meetings. The other part is what I want to make very clear is that any personal attacks, any attacks against institutions, anything that I deem to be inflammatory, or if this body deems to be inflammatory, any pejorative statements, I'll let you look that up yourself, but any of those statements made, I am no longer giving warnings or giving second shots, and it doesn't matter who's at the podium, the public comment at that point will be shut off for that individual. So, I just want, I hate that I'm even making this statement today, but I wanted to be very clear about, because in our rules, we do give citizens a lot of leeway, more so than most counties, and I'm glad for that. I'm glad that we give people an opportunity to address their commission. However, when we start talking about things that this body could never, ever take up in any form of a meeting, then I think that we've moved away from what the intent of the public comment period is. In addition to, I don't care which side of the aisle you're on, honestly, in this seat, I do not care. What I do care about is we're not going to sit here and listen to individuals that we may or may not know, or institutions that we may or may not have familiarity with, or dealings with. They're not going to be attacked. They're not going to have things, or inflammatory things said about them as long as I'm chair. Moving forward, is there any questions or anything that I've said that needs to, that you have questions or uncertainty about, please feel free to ask me, but that is the way I understand the rules, that's the way I understand the responsibilities of this body, and I ask that those who address commission, commissioners who address one another, and commissioners who address officials, that we always keep that in the front of our mind. So, with that being said, I will open up the podium to any individual who wants to address county commission, unless there's any commissioners that want to speak on anything that I've said. Okay. All right, anybody in the audience that would like to, again, you'll have three minutes at 30 seconds, we will tell you, you have 30 seconds. As you can see, the parliamentarian's not here today, Commissioner Jaeger will be looking at the clock, and then, again, it will be a hard cutoff at three, so at this time, I will open up the podium to anyone who would like to address the county. Sir. Time starts now, Mr. Mullins.
My name is Nathan Mullins, I'm from Oak Ridge. One year ago, Sheriff Russell Barker spoke for the record of his official investigation into the sex manuals newly offered at that time to the elementary school students by the library board. He spoke about networking with federal agencies like ICAC, the Umbrella Group for Federal Monitoring of Internet Crimes Against Children, collaborating with Tennessee state agencies. They researched the gateway websites offered in some of those manuals for pedophile traffic. The sheriff stated it was his duty to act on predator solicitation legally if evidence were provided of a local youth being approached. Teachers know the odds. It's not if, it is when. We know the certainty and the risks as parents. We see our kids' peers being sifted. Are you protecting this community's children? This region is unwittingly a sex trafficking hub because of the I-40 and I-75 juncture. Do you feel comfortable leaving other people's kids to their own devices, literally, after your library board admitted their intent? Parents knows, knows they're a crisis, but y'all's family is safe because this DA absolved you of liability with an illegal permission slip nullifying federal obscenity laws like Monopoly's get out of jail free card. Obviously, you don't have to be the prophet Daniel to see the writing on the wall. At the end of this month, the moral majority will be in charge of both houses of government, and the good people of Anderson County will be expecting legislation, but before that, our conservative officers in law enforcement will no longer be targeted by Biden's radical DAs, and that evidence will be prosecuted. I adjure and suggest politely, apart from the frustration occurring last month-
30 seconds.
-that it would be great if the buck were not passed any longer on this issue. It would be nice to have cooperation, it would be nice to see a stand taken on removing, obviously, gateway books. I appreciate your consideration, I intend to be much more diplomatic, and I appreciate your patience, but I would also like for the parents to see consensus and action on this issue.
Time.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to address the county commission at this point? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our approval and correction of agendas. First, we'll start with the consent agenda. I do want to add, it was passed out to everyone, the request from Claxton Elementary School for waste management funds. I'd like to add that under the consent agenda, we can add that as item four, if that's okay with the body. Is there anything else on the consent agenda that you all see needing adding or amending? All right, seeing none, is, we have a motion by Commissioner Wondell and a second by Commissioner Allen for approval. All in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, moving on to the regular agenda. Are there any items on the regular agenda that we see needing added or amended or taken off, anything?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented by Commissioner Allen. We have a second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion on this agenda? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okey doke. We will now go to our courtesy resolutions and proclamations. Commissioner Jaeger, you have the floor, sir.
This is a proclamation for, from the Anderson County Board of Commissioners. Whereas Jim Michael was born, raised, attended college and medical school in Minnesota, followed by cardiology training at the University of Louisville. Jim served in the United States Navy for, by the way, let me, before I keep going, this is for the AdFac, sorry, but that would have been at the end, the AdFac Bill Wilcox Bowtie Award, so that's, that's the reason for all this. Now I'll continue, now you understand a little bit of what's going on. Jim served in the Navy for two years as a general medical officer in Okinawa in the Philippines, then a year in Pensacola, Florida, where he met Sheila. Whereas Sheila was born and raised in Florida and received a bachelor's degree in marketing from the University of West Florida. Jim and Sheila married in Sheila's hometown of Gulf Breeze, Florida, June 28th, 1980. The Michaels moved to Oak Ridge, Tennessee, July 1986, and raised their now-grown children, Tess Leffman, Julia Matthews, Florence Harris, and James Michael, and they have seven wonderful grandchildren. Whereas Jim Michael was a practicing cardiologist with Parkway Cardiology in Oak Ridge for 24 years until his retirement in 2009, and Dr. Michael was a member of the founding task force of the Free Medical Clinic in Oak Ridge in 2009, and he served as the clinic's medical director for the first five years, and is now a regular volunteer doctor for the clinic. Dr. Michael also led annual medical mission trips to Central American countries for more than 20 years. He stays active with bicycling, and most recently, on his e-bike. Whereas Sheila Michael has enjoyed multiple volunteer opportunities, primarily serving the community through Oak Ridge Schools, Children's Advocacy Network, AYSO, Boys and Girls Club, the Children's Museum of Oak Ridge, Kids on the Block, Ridgeview Behavioral Health Services, and the Holson Conference of the United Methodist Church. Most significantly, Sheila was the founding inspiration for the creation in 2012 of the Tennessee Outreach Center for Homeless, better known as TORCH. Currently, she's still very involved in the organization's success. Additionally, Sheila is an accomplished actor and has been in several Oak Ridge Playhouse productions. Whereas together for the last 44 years, the Michaels have always shared the love of travel, including one around the trip world as a new couple. They have visited all seven continents, and Jim has visited 98 countries. Many trips involve their children, backpacking, hiking, and exploring the wonders of Turkey, Austria, Italy, Egypt, Brazil, Mexico, Honduras, and Nicaragua. Whereas Dr. Jim and Sheila Michael have experienced a well-rounded life, learning about new places and cultures, and always looking to serve others in any way they can, both at home in Oak Ridge and abroad. In addition to their community endeavors, Jim and Sheila, both are very active members of the First United Methodist Church in Oak Ridge, where Sheila has served as the director for small group ministry, and currently is serving as a lay speaker, while Jim is serving as a Stephen minister. Now, therefore, we, Anderson County Mayor Terry Frank and members of the Board of Anderson County Commissioners, in conjunction with the aid to distressed families of Appalachian counties, which is also known as AdFac, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 16th, 2024, as Jim and Sheila Michael Day in Anderson County, and we join AdFac in honoring the Michaels as the 2024 recipients of the prestigious Bill Wilcox Bowtie Award for leading a life of purposeful impact in their selfless service to the community and a better tomorrow. This is Tyler May's commission chair, and Terry Frank is county mayor, and accepting in their, they must be off doing some, some of the good deeds, but we have previous winner, Candy C. I know, yeah, forgot her name all of a sudden, and Wendy Aron. She's a bowtie chairperson. So, Candy, there you go.
Thanks very much. Okey doke. Thank you, Commissioner Jaeger. Brian, is, can the board be cleared by chance? All right, moving on to elections, to fill two seats on the beer board, I'll turn it over to nominating chair Denise, Commissioner Palmer, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the nominating committee met last week to consider two applications for the beer board, and the two applicants were at the meeting, they asked some questions, we gave them some information, but because we did not have a quorum, we do not have a recommendation. However, both applicants were very willing to serve and got their answers to their questions, so rather than delay the appointments, we have three openings, and these are two, you have the applications in your packet, hopefully you were able to look at those. I did not see anything that was, that would permit them from serving, so I would like to make a motion that we approve these two applicants to serve in the, two of the three vacancies on the beer board.
All right. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner.
Let me also say they weren't able to be here today because of work and commitments, otherwise they would have been here, but they did come to the, to the meeting.
Very well, thank you. Got a motion and a second. Commissioners, well, I see you have a motion, I'm sure it was about this, but if you wanted to speak on this.
And I recommend them highly.
Good deal.
Let me give you both their names, it's Lisa Roberts and Jennifer Pemberton.
Good. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to approve Ms. Roberts and Ms. Pemberton. Is there any discussion on these recommendations? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Palmer. Moving on to presentation of reports, County Mayor Terry Frank.
Good morning. The City of Aller Springs has appointed Corey Jenkins to the Anderson County Solid Waste Advisory Board, and I am requesting a motion to confirm.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. The next item, Mr. Chairman, is I'm requesting a motion to approve the required contract between East Tennessee Development District and Anderson County for grant administration of grant award from the State of Tennessee Economic and Community Development. This is a broadband-ready community grant, the full contract was approved by commission on September 16th, 2024. This particular contract between Anderson County and East Tennessee Development District has been approved to form by Mr. Brooks.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, is I am requesting a motion to approve the State of Tennessee Disability and Aging Senior Center Grant. This is the contract documentation for a grant award in the amount of $45,000 for a new senior center van and lettering. The contract was needed by November 1st, so I did not have time to go through the purchasing committee, but it has been approved to form by Mr. Brooks, and our purchasing, deputy purchasing agent Catherine has been included on the distribution.
Very well. Okey doke. Commissioner McCamey with a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Wondell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to support this, but Mayor, could you tell us what the van will be used for?
Yes, so, you know, primarily, if they have things or needs to pick up, sometimes they do pick up seniors. We hope to further expand the delivery of meals, so we have grown the partnership with Ethra Nutrition. There are opportunities there to further outreach other than what is covered just by Ethra themselves, so that's the predominant area. We're also looking into trying to stand up a transportation program, one of the areas where there's some weakness in the county is definitely in the area of doctors' appointments and things like that. Blount County has a program called Smiles where they are able to, to make that happen, so we, we do want to go down that path, we're trying to stand that up, though.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion about the motion? Robbie, do you think this would be safe to be an appropriation, with this being money? All right. All right, if there's no other discussion, we will go to the board and vote, please.
Come on, yes, vote.
Okay. All right, we've got 14 yes, motion passes. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have today.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, moving on down to Director of Finance, Robbie Holbrook, Budget Committee Report.
Good morning. First combined purchasing and Budget Committee meeting, so we took purchasing contracts first, there were three of those contracts, all approved by the Law Director. Seeking approval as a group or individually?
All right, we have a motion to approve as a group by Commissioner Allen. Do we have a second? And a second by Commissioner Smallridge. Is there any discussion on that group of contracts? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. 15, Commissioner Varen, you threw me off. Where did that 15 come from? Didn't see you come in. 15 yes, zero no, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Moving into the budget portion of the meeting, the cash and fund balance report, still unaudited by, this month, restricted funds, 2.3 million, committed funds are 523,537, assigned funds 4.5 million, and assigned fund balance 11,493,888, for a total fund balance of 18,922,999. Cash 15,339,16, which is up a couple of million from last year at this time. Couple of other funds of note, school fund balance 11.2 million, and Dr. Perry was speaking about the Educational Capital Project Fund, 177, it's 948,621, a little short of 1 million for that fund as well. Any questions on the fund balance report?
Robbie, I, just really quick.
Yes.
Do you, what direction do you project us going after the audit, north or south?
Some of these could, will increase, I mean, we already know-
I guess I should just say general fund, sorry.
Yeah, the general fund, probably close to the same as it is.
All right.
Yeah, I don't, there's usually not much change in the numbers, just some audit entries we do after the fact, so it affects these, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sales tax report for August, 9.7% increase, 4.3 million for the county as a whole, and the Anderson County portion, 511,851, which is up 2.3% from last August. ARPA funds project report, three, still available, 300,445, we do have a $56,000 commitment this month, that's in the budget, that's on the budget agenda, which will leave about 246,000 still available for the projects. We do have to have obligation deadline at 12/31, which means all projects have to have a contract or a PO in place, so next month is, we kind of, I mean, I look for everything to be, all contracts, me and the mayor, Randy, and John have talked some about these that are still uncommitted, and I expect all those to be before the December deadline, but if we do know of any, November would be the time to take care of it, because it's our last opportunity in a commission meeting to make those changes as well, so. Any questions on? All right, and the last thing is a grants inventory list for 2425. We do have a new grant from the mayor's office at the bottom, the brownfield identification grant for $20,000 that we added from last month. Okay. No questions, I'll move into the budget amendments. Group five appropriations, there are 11 of those, number three- Group five appropriations, there are eleven of those, number three, and then five through fourteen, seeking approval as a group. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And the last budget amendment we have is a transfer for payroll, number four, it's five thousand dollars from the circuit court clerk.
We have a motion and, by Commissioner Beauchamp, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote, please.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Under Group Eight miscellaneous, Section A, there were three grants, two from EMS and one from the sheriff that are just grant applications. There was no match involved with any of these grants.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Smallridge, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, please go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Thank you. Under Section B, Section B one was the Block House Valley Recycling Center. Mayor Frank presented an appropriation request for fifty-six thousand, five hundred from Fund One Twenty-One ARPA for survey and design services for a Block House Valley Recycling Center. That motion was passed by Commissioner Beauchamp and seconded by Commissioner Palmer to refer to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okado. We've got a motion by Commissioner McCamey and seconded by Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Wondell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The fifty-six, five hundred, what, what's it going to be used for? I don't see an explanation in here.
Architectural services, right, Mayor? But there was a letter in the agenda from the mayor that, and backup that explained that.
Estimate of services. There were also some add-on. Oh, thank you. So the proposals for survey and design services for Block House Valley Center, this would include developing the facilities needed in the new center to provide building sizes, other information necessary for layout, the preparation of conceptual drawings for approval by Anderson County, of the location of the site, and the configuration of new facilities, field survey to locate the exact topo for area of the new center, preliminary grading and drainage plan with a preliminary cost estimate, final design drawings with construction details, a SWIP for TDEC approval, evaluate site for drain filled, because there is no sewer there, and prepare the appropriate drawings to receive Health Department approval for septic lines and tank, prepare the bid documents and specifications, assist Anderson County in the bid process, review of shop drawings and contract administration during the project, including pay request approval and erosion inspections. What is not included is if we, if we need any architectural assistance on the buildings themselves, or any kind of, if we want, like during construction project oversight. I also discussed with the Budget Committee coming back, because there's some other questions were asked about other costs. One of the things not included was the geotechnical, any kind of survey that's needed there, so I am working on, expect to have an estimate of that cost soon, but it's not too much. The, just to give you a little background, Commissioner Wondell, the Solid Waste Advisory Board has met outside, on-site, and did ask that I get a proposal and, and come to the Budget Committee, so that was at their request. Commissioner, Chairman McCamey could, could answer some further questions.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
What, so we're looking at the idea of possibly upgrading the recycling facilities?
Yes, doing an actual material recovery facility, so we've, Roan County does a lot with recycling, and Anderson County is really kind of behind the times with all that can be done with recycling. They actually generate a lot of revenue down in Roan County, and so the Solid Waste Board just has wanted to get off the ground again, and let's get this going, and so we're going to do some work on it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, please go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Under Section B two, Mayor Frank presented information on new legislation concerning court order, electronic monitoring requirements. No action was taken for that, and under unfinished business, the Oak Ridge Boys and Girls Club, that was deferred to the next meeting, so that's all I have on the budget agenda.
All right. Moving to Finance.
Finance Committee met October fourteenth, Monday. All the discussion was about Claxton Elementary School. This presentation that y'all saw earlier was presented at the Finance Meeting as well. The first motion was by Commissioner Tracy Wondell, and seconded by Commissioner, not Commissioner, Director of Schools, Dr. Parrott, and passed to refer to the Anderson County Board of Commissioners with a recommendation for approval to allocate all proceeds from the sale of the old Claxton School property to offset the cost of Claxton Elementary Project, with the sales process and timing to be determined. Just need approval on that here, too, as well.
You do?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Is there any discussion on this motion here? Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, I just want to let the folks know at home and you two, Mr. Chairman, that this motion just allows the process to sell the property, use those funds to go back to pay the new school debt, but in that process, we're going to be going through finance, budget, and operations to make sure we sell this property in a way that will benefit not only our district, but also the entire county, so I just want folks at home to know that we're just not going to throw it out there and let somebody go to the highest bidder and, you know, put whatever they want up there, so I, I'm excited about the opportunity for all of us to come together and, and do what's, what's best for the entire county when we sell that property. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. All right. Any other discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And as Commissioner Wondell was speaking about, there was another motion made to send all of that to Operations and the Budget Committee to, for the next month, for the sale of the school. The second motion from the Finance Meeting was Scott Gibson, Senior Vice President of Camber Securities, presented a draft resolution, twenty-four, ten, eleven, eighty-eight, authorizing the issuance of rural elementary school bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed twenty million dollars. Scott is also here tonight, and I would like to let him speak a little bit about this if he'd like to.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Holbrook, I wanted to ask you a question real quick before Scott gets started. Do you have any suggestions, ideas on how we're approaching this? I didn't ask you during the Finance, but I just wanted to ask you here.
No, I, I'm fine answering that question. I can honestly verify all that Dr. Parrott is speaking about. We do have two bonds coming off, one this year and one the next year, twenty-five, twenty-six, that frees up almost one point eight million dollars in the debt service fund, and the schools contribute most of the funding for the elementary school, because we only draw two and a half pennies, and that's probably two hundred thousand dollars. That's all it's provided for property tax. So they make the appropriation or the contribution to the debt service from Fund One Forty-One, and as he spoke about, too, they've put some money aside in some contract, I mean, in architectural fees and stuff that will be, can be moved to next year to the, to appropriate those funds for that.
So you feel good about it?
Yes, and I do, I mean, and the schools this year, too. We haven't talked about rollovers yet for, but they had close to a five million dollar rollover in their budget in One Forty-One this year, so I think there's funding there for.
Appreciate your perspective. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. All right, Scott, do you have the mic?
Thank you, everyone. So there is a resolution on your agenda, twenty million dollar rural elementary school resolution that would provide the funding for Claxton. It is a standard resolution, like y'all have adopted in the past for your school building programs. It was drafted by Bass, Barry, and Sims, who is y'all's bond counsel. It allows up to thirty years worth of debt, and I did hand out to all the commissioners one-page summary of what we're trying to accomplish here. This graph lays out the current debt service and the proposed debt service, so as has been mentioned, the, after two more years, the debt does drop off, and you can see that outlined here is the current debt service, where the red line is, and this black line shows, everything below it is the current debt service, so we go from about a million, seven thirty in debt service in two thousand twenty-six, down to about a million, two or so in two thousand twenty-seven, so that half million bucks or so will get freed up out of the regular school budget to help apply to this, and then the debt drops off again in two thousand thirty-one, down to about four hundred thousand bucks, so, so the issue for the school is, as far as the debt service is trying to get from today, when we, or when we actually issue the debt, which will probably be sometime in the spring of next year. We were on track to maybe issue some this year, but the school bidding and all is running a little bit behind where I thought we would be when we had this discussion almost a year and a half ago, when we started this conversation with the schools and stuff. And so they're going to be going out to bid probably and getting all their final maximum issue, maximum construction cost and all that, probably around January. And so we thought it was best for a couple of reasons. One, just go ahead and get this out of the way, so the funding is in place, and two, when they do go out to bid, the contractors know that the funding has been approved, so that way all the contractors who may have an interest will know that we are moving forward with this project, and the county commission fully supports it. And finally, after discussion with the Finance Committee, because of the change in timing from December or this, November, December this year, probably to March, April, May or something on the first bond issue, we were able to tweak the debt service sum based on the timing. We have gotten, we were above here this summary here, two point eight, three nine that's on this graph, that the schools need over the next six years to fund above the current line. That number was north of three million bucks at the Finance Committee last week. Because of the changing in timing and stuff, though, we were able to move about a million dollars of that out past that hump, so the total debt service didn't change, it's just the timing, but it does take some pressure off the schools for the next six years of trying to fill that hole in, and so they should be able to allocate more dollars to capital projects that may have gone to debt service to keep their schools up and stuff in the future, so we'll get through the next six years hopefully a little bit easier than we had originally planned. So if you approve the resolution night, like I said, we will have this approval in place when they go out to bid on the final cost for the schools. The contractors will know it's in place, that the county commission is fully on board. The first bond issue probably, like I said, March, April, May type timeframe, will probably do about ten million dollars out of the twenty. There's a couple spending guidelines we have to meet under the federal tax laws, and so we want to make sure that we can meet those guidelines, and so we'll probably start with about half the money, and then as we move into late two thousand twenty-five or early two thousand twenty-six, probably more than likely early two thousand twenty-six, we'll issue the balance of the debt. The schools are projected to open in July, August of two thousand twenty-seven, so we still have two and a half years or more before we have to, before the school will be done, so we'll have to just adjust our issuance to accommodate that and meet all the federal tax rules and regulations, and, and I still have to incorporate probably, which is a separate discussion at some point, but we still have the animal shelter out there that we have been discussing, and that project is coming sooner rather than later. We should have more information on that fairly soon, so we may have to talk about that at some point. So that is all that's going on with finance in the county, as far as I'm concerned, and what I help the county with, and we just need your approval on the resolution. Is there any questions I can answer?
Can you, if I may, the, the process of when we start looking at interest rates, who's going to be issuing the bonds?
Yeah, so we, I ran these numbers on these graphs. They are thirty-year debt, and I have used a four percent average rate. We should probably be right at four percent if we were issuing debt today. When we do issue the debt in the spring, I'm hopeful that rates will have come down a little bit more, so maybe we'll be slightly under four percent, at least with the first issue, and then as we get into late twenty-five, early twenty-six, I'm hoping rates maybe even be lower, so on average, hopefully we'll be under four percent for the entire twenty million. And so what I will do is we will put together a package, we will sell these bonds at competitive public sale like we've done in the past, and that basically means we stick a financing package out there, just like you're going to bid out the construction of the school, or bid out when you go buy a piece of new sheriff cruisers and get bids from multiple dealerships or what have you, we will bid out the debt, and so we will accept those bids from financial institutions, and the bidder with the lowest interest rate and cost will be the winner, and so we'll make sure that you get the lowest cost of funding on the day and time that we sell the debt. That is how we've traditionally done it here in Anderson County for a long time, and so like I said, we, we have used a four percent budget rate, but I am hopeful that we will be slightly under that when it's all said and done.
All right. Commissioner Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I understood correctly, remind me, did you say that if we paid off early or paid more, there was no penalty for that?
So we have, traditionally in municipal finance, there is a time period that you can't pay off early, and so we will have that on these bonds, but that, that time period probably will be about seven years out, so when we sell the bonds, two thousand thirty-one, thirty-two, or something like that, your other debt drops off at that time period, too, so, but once we hit that debt or that time period, then there is no penalty. So we'll have six or seven-year type timeframe, probably seven, where we, where you'll be kind of locked into that rate, but after that seven years passes, you can prepay it in whole or part at any time, so if you want to write a check for half a million dollars and pay some off, or if we happen to have lower interest rates at the time, we can look to refinance it and lower the rates some more from four percent to less than four percent and try to save some money.
And I do notice that the resolution's up to twenty million.
That's correct.
I'm hoping less.
Well, I think you, I mean, as the schools mentioned, we're going to probably do all twenty million, because the project itself is probably twenty-seven or twenty-eight, twenty-nine million when it's all said and done, and so you're only financing twenty of that amount. The others, eight plus million will be paid out of cash that you are putting in from, through the school budget. So then, Dr. Parrott mentioned, they've been funding the architect and engineering fees and paying cash for those, as they have done the design work. They bought, I think, the land and the current church building out of current fund balance and out of cash, so all that's been paid for, so you're, you're not fun, you're not financing the whole school, you're only financing two-thirds of it, you know, or something like that, so we'll, we'll end up issuing all twenty million, because if we don't, then the schools just have to come up with even more cash, and so as you can see on this graph, they're already going to, A, have to pay the three, almost three million bucks to cover this debt service out of their budget, and they're going to, so if we issue less than twenty, that number goes up, and that puts a strain on their cash flow, and then anything, if it comes in above the, everything that comes above the estimated cost, and I will see where that comes in January, but the schools are committed to making up that balance, too. So we're, you're going to be issuing twenty million, but like I said, we're really not funding, I mean, the school is, costs a lot more than twenty million. Does that make sense?
Yes, but the first one is ten million, the first issuance is ten.
We'll probably do about ten, yes.
Okay.
We'll see the timing, we'll adjust that amount, I'm guessing ten, based on the construction period and how much, we'll get a cash flow estimate from the contractor when it's all said and done, and we'll see how much they're going to spend over a certain time period, and we'll match that up with the tax laws I have to work with, and then we'll see how, if that gets us into like March or April of twenty-six, then we can come back and, and do the next one, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions for Scott? Any other discussion or questions for Scott? All right, CNN.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Is there any questions for Robbie on the resolution?
I do want to add too, even though if the resolution gets approved today, it, once the bids go out and the contracts are awarded, it would come back to the finance committee. Uh, the chairman, the chairman of the finance committee, Mayor Frank, and the committee both, all the committee members wanted that to happen as well, before.
We sell the bonds.
Before we sell the bonds, yes.
We'll give them an update.
Because we're looking at possibly February, March, there's some time, different time.
Are we good with the voice vote on this?
No, you need to roll call.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
Is it okay if I just read this resolution?
Yeah.
Just a little bit of it?
Yeah, go ahead.
So people at home know what we're talking about. Resolution number 24 dash 10 dash 1188. Resolution authorizing the issuance of rule elementary school bonds and the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 20 million dollars. Just want to agree that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. And before we go to the vote, Mayor Frank?
Yeah, and just real quickly, um, I did talk to Dr. Parrott at the finance committee about getting something in writing. I know that I took notes on a lot of the, um, you know, what the pay plan is, so taxpayers and commissioners, you know, fully understand that the funding is there. So, um, I, I will still ask Dr. Parrott to get that, and perhaps, as we go through this process, we could have some, you know, transparency to ensure everyone that there is the ability to pay. I did not get one.
Well, Commissioner Foster's not here, so we will.
Okay.
He loses out. All right. Okay. All right, uh, let's go to the board and vote, please. Fifteen yes, motion passes.
That's all I have for finance.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, uh, moving on down the road, um, I don't know, this is the most you've done in a while, Dr. Parrott. Feel like we need to give you a break here. But you're up.
Hey, I hope you got a chance to, uh, read the, uh, report. We've got a lot of great things going on, and, uh, just to, uh, kind of give you an update, this is kind of like a, a broken record, but, uh, they're working on the plumbing, on the concession stand today, on the softball field. We're going to get that done, hopefully before I die, I hope. But, uh, anyway, the lights are done, they've been approved, so we're, we're getting, we're getting closer on, on those things. But, uh, I'll entertain, uh, any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Parrott? Uh, Commissioner Wondell?
Dr. Parrott, you mentioned during that presentation during the public period about, uh, being able to add on, I, I think you said we're at 460 or something right now at Claxton, and then you said it, is it being built for 700?
It's being built for 700, yeah.
And then we can expand it to?
Yes, you can, you can go up about 200 more. You can add, you can add two classrooms on both ends, so you can add another four classrooms, if you're talking 30 in a classroom, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and we do have some, there's some extra space in there, we could make some extra classrooms in there, that we have some classrooms that are not being used right now.
So it'll be at 700 when we open the door?
Yes.
All right, uh, Commissioner McCain, you're recognized.
Dr. Parrott, I've noticed the construction has started on the, uh, I guess you call it vocational building.
CTE building, yes, yes.
What's the estimated completion date on that?
June of last year. Uh, we hope to be, uh, in that building by next school year. They had some problems, uh, the, the building, the way I understand the building they designed, and the footprint, it didn't, for some reason, they couldn't get that building when the bids come out, the bill, so they had to go back and redesign, so that put us about three months behind. But they're working on concrete today, so we should have all the concrete work done in the next month, and then start up with the building. So that, that will be a metal building with brick facade around it, so it's going to be a great thing. We've already got, uh, a commitment from TCAT is partnering with us, so they're helping us with some of the equipment inside of it. So that will really expand our, uh, our CTE programs down at Clinton High School.
Thank you.
And that's all funded out of that gift grant, so it's all, uh, money from the state and feds.
Okay, Doug, is there any other questions, uh, for Dr. Parrott? All right, thank you, sir. We will now go down to the law director's office report.
As you can see, we had, uh, I think about 30 contracts. Well, yeah, 27 anyway. Contracts that we reviewed and approved as to form. You can see the, uh, update on our zoning cases. In fact, I was in court this morning to take default judgments in three of them. Bankruptcy's pretty much self-explanatory, and then there are two cases pending that we reported on, the Moss case, that has a trial date of May, uh, 27 of next year. We're in communication with Mr. Pinkleton, the insurance counsel, and he's optimistic that the county and the officers will be dismissed from that on summary judgment. Ogul versus Jones is in post-trial at this point, there's no final judgment at this time. Motions are pending, I spoke briefly by email with counsel, Mr. Knight, no hearing date has been set yet. Any questions?
Is there any questions for the law director on those cases, or?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, sir, Commissioner Allen?
Could you just give us a quick overview of, of the Moss, just a quick summary and of the other one?
Of Moss first?
Yes, sir.
It, it's my understanding from, from review and speaking with counsel, there was a, uh, high-speed chase, we'll say, that started, it was initiated in Kentucky, it ended in Anderson County, with, uh, I believe shots fired and one, uh, deceased. And then his family has turned around and, and they have filed wrongful death action. I know it involved deputies of Anderson County, uh, at least one Rocky Top police officer, and that's what I know about it, Commissioner.
And the other one?
The Jones versus, excuse me, Ogul versus Jones, that is a hostile work environment lawsuit pending and heard in July, I believe, Commissioner, in federal district court in Knoxville, resulted in, uh, a return of verdicts, uh, I'm going to say in the neighborhood of $4 million against Mr. Jones, and around 1.6 against Anderson County. After, one judgment was, uh, reduced based on the Governmental Tort Liability Act, bringing the total down to 1.6 million against the county, and that's what is the subject of the post-trial motions, is, uh, will there be any relief granted from that? And then it can take the appeal process from there, Commissioner.
Okay, uh, thank you, Commissioner Allen. Uh, any other questions on those cases? And you may be getting to it, but I would like, uh, Mr. Brooks, if you could give us a, if you could give us a summation on the, the, the opinion you sent out on Friday?
Yes. Okay, uh, a couple of commissioners or several commissioners asked for clarification about the upcoming, uh, strategic planning retreat, weekend seminar, whatever, uh, and wanted to know whether or not the Open Meetings Act applied to that. And what I was able to find is with, uh, very limited exceptions, I'm going to say there's three. If it's a, a situation where commission is going to, uh, inspect property, if it's a situation where, um, commission is strictly getting information, let's say, uh, you have a speaker and it's just imparting information to council, then the Opens Meeting Act does not apply. However, if it's a situation where there would be discussion, and I, that is defined broadly, uh, deliberation or a vote, then the Opens Meeting Act does apply there. The situation is, I believe it to be with the upcoming strategic planning is, it looks like, uh, there was a list of broadly, um, stated goals. Does not appear there was any discussion or deliberation, it was simply a matter of coming up with the list. And I, I may be jumping ahead of myself, but it, it sounds to me like, the next phase of this would involve some deliberation or some discussion. So it'd be my opinion that I, as a safe precaution for this commission, would be to follow the Opens Meeting Act as far as advertising it, uh, agenda, and of course, open to the public, uh, quorum requirement, and that there be some, uh, re- recording of minutes. Now, that is a safe harbor opinion. You don't know, obviously, what is going to happen until you get into the meeting, but from what I could review, and I reviewed the, uh, report from the March meeting, and it looked like the next step would be some, uh, I'm going to call it deliberation, because I think that's what the statute uses as far as a term. Is that responsive? I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just made an assumption there.
Just for, um, comparison, uh, Oak Ridge has a work session every month. Okay, and I, I looked back at their history, they do put an agenda on, online, they record, audio-record the meeting as their minutes.
That would be acceptable.
Okay, all right, that's what I was wondering about.
Yeah, that would be acceptable.
All right, thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Smorridge?
It sounds to me like almost any meeting would be subject to the open meetings. I mean, I, you're usually going to get into discussion or deliberation, i- is that a fair statement?
I think it is a fair statement, Commissioner. It, it appears to have been, and I think I've alluded to this in the opinion, it's just been broadly applied, and the courts that have looked at it have generally come down in, in, in favor of or in, in deciding that the Opens Meeting Act does apply. And that's, that's always a safe response, uh, for this commission. Uh, I think, it might have been Commissioner Isbell or Commissioner Wondell was talking, was asking about location. You know, the commission room is probably a good place, uh, you do have the recording information, or the recording set up, and also the ability to televise if that is needed. It's just very, very limited situations where I could advise this commission that you do not need to, uh, follow that act.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes, how do you define deliberations?
You're going to put me on the spot, but I, I, there were a couple of definitions that I found. Uh, I think it's where you may be trying to get a consensus, uh, of opinion in a matter.
Do deliberations lead to a vote? Is that what you're getting at?
You can have deliberations and it not lead to a vote, it could just be deliberations. I think the, the way the statute's set up is deliberations or vote, it would apply. It's, you know, obviously Commissioner, deliberations, yeah, that's going to be some subjective, uh, and that's where, when I give an opinion to this commission, I want to protect the commission. And, uh, and that's the reason I, I kind of came to the opinion that, or not came to the opinion, I did come to the opinion that the safe course would be, going forward with the, uh, Strategic Planning Committee would be to go ahead and advertise it using the Opens Meeting Act.
Before we go to Ms. Capshaw, are you aware that both of them were publicly noticed?
I am now, yes, yes, I am.
And would you say, looking back on it, that, that the members who participated in that meeting did not participate in an illegal meeting?
Absolutely not, Chairman.
All right, thank you.
I looked at, it, just real quick, I'll, I'll just follow up, I looked at the minutes of the meeting from March, and, uh, that was borderline as to whether Opens Meeting Act would apply. My opinion is based upon that, it, there was nothing improper done at the meeting or by the commissioners who were present.
Thank you.
Just pure and simple.
Uh, Commissioner Capshaw?
I was just going to speak on, um, I was a frequent flyer up until a month or two ago at the Oak Ridge, when the city of Oak Ridge would have their workshop, work sessions, and so I do know that they would, um, limit, limit or not open up to where the, the public at least comment, so that they could get things done. They would make certain exceptions to certain, um, topics, but I just wanted to throw that in there.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Commissioner Palmer, and then we?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I attended an open meetings, uh, workshop last, a couple of weeks ago, over at UT that was given by the comptroller's office. And I think that they had said in that meeting, they've stricken out the quorum, the, the part about requiring a quorum.
Unless there's a vote.
Unless there's a vote, okay.
Yes, you're correct.
So, so we don't necessarily have to have a quorum for a workshop?
Correct, there's going to be no vote, then.
All right.
You, you, yeah, I appreciate you making that clarification.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brooks, I appreciate it. Committee and reports, uh, Chairman Isbell, Operations Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Anderson made a motion to approve amendments to the basic emergency operations plan, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger, motion passed unanimously to forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right, CNN, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner Vermaiden motion approved resolution number 24 dash 07 dash 1177, establishing selection protocol and procedures for the dispersment of opioid abatement funds as amended, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw, motion passed unanimously to forward to full commission for approval.
All right. The board is not clear, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
So we have a motion by, who seconded, I'm sorry? All right, we have a motion, uh, by Commissioner Allen, uh, and seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Does commission have any questions of, of our office, in that there were three or four changes discussed that needed to be made? And I think what's in the packet is the, uh, resolution that was presented at the Operations Committee. So if y'all have any questions, any of you regarding those changes, uh, just to make sure everybody's clear, I'd be happy to, to reply to that.
And so, it's going opioid to budget? Is this how, it's not? What, again, can you, if you would like?
What we had discussed is, um, the applications would go through the, um, finance director first, and then, uh, they would be forwarded on to the nonprofit, uh, committee, and then to opioid, and then to budget.
Okay. All right, uh, any, okay, Commissioner Jaeger?
I, I'm speaking as both the nonprofit chair and, uh, as a commissioner, but, uh, in, in my opinion, the, the opioid committee has been in existence for maybe a year, I don't know exactly when it was formed, but, um, they've held a number of meetings, they've held workshops, they've spoken to a lot of the agencies in town. So they're, for them to turn this process over to eight new people who have not had any involvement in, in this, well, some are on both, I, I don't think is the right move. I think the opioid, uh, people should hear the, they don't even have to have hearings, they just can review applications and make the decision. I think the nonprofit is a step unnecessary, and, um, that's just my view of things, I don't, I don't. I don't, I don't think the nonprofit committee needs to be involved at all since opioid, budget, and commission will all hear these.
Okay. Are you offering an amendment, Commissioner Jaeger, to this motion?
Well, I can't point to one sentence that, that I, I wanna change, but one thought is, let me, let me look at...
Or do you wanna hear from the other three and then?
Sure.
I can come back to you.
Yeah, please do that.
Okay. Commissioner Val.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't have the exact same concerns as Commissioner Jaeger, a couple of them, and then he pointed out some things that I think I need to digest, so I'll go ahead and yield my time to the next speaker. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Doug. All right, Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Commissioner Jaeger. The opioid committee has done extensive detail in meeting with all these people that's sent out's request, and I appreciate him and his request, and that I'll support whatever he wants to do. Thank you.
All right. Vice Chair Vandergriff, you have the floor.
So the, the question that I was asking was, is procedurally or, or legally, is there any thing that would prevent a task force? Because the, the opioid, it's an opioid task force, it's not necessarily a, a committee. So could they make the, could the task force make the recommendation to the Budget Committee?
Commissioner Isbell.
Or does it need to go through a committee such as nonprofit?
Mr. Chairman, I would think because it goes through the other committees, which is the financial side, budget and all that, that would be covered under that, and then that way you have, you know, so many other commissioners too.
And if I read it correctly, this is changing the task force to a committee, is that correct? I saw some striking out.
That, that would be my suggestion.
If we changed this from a task force to a committee, but it would just be a recommendation similar to nonprofit.
Exactly.
They're, they're only making recommendations at that point.
And their hearings can be held as they wish, whether they wanna an in-person or just an application process, but I, I think they should handle it from beginning to end. I don't think nonprofit needs to, to get involved as another step.
Commissioner Val, you stood over it.
I did, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was kinda along the same lines. I know, and I appreciate all the efforts that the opioid task force has done, I've attended several of the meetings and hearing the concerns from, from all the different public organizations, I think was a very daunting task, appreciate Chairman Vandergriff and those members for doing that. However, attending some of those meetings, I do know that some of the organizations that presented good cases for funding weren't nonprofits. I know our Drug Court program, which is also a 501(c)(3), it's kind of a hybrid, I almost consider it a county department to an extent, and the nonprofit, I think, does a very good job of sorting through the needs of each request, so I, I don't wanna diminish the work the nonprofit committee does as well, Chairman Jaeger does a fine job on that. However, I kind of agree with him, I don't know if nonprofit is the next step in a decision like this. Certainly if we changed the opioid task force to a committee, that may change the perspective of that a little bit. I understand Vice Chairman Vandergriff's concern with that, but I guess I'm stuck on is nonprofit, do they need to be a step in this process or not? That's where I'm kinda hung up on it, but I'm kinda like Commissioner Isbell, I'll yield the what, Commissioner Jaeger thinks is based on that. Thank you.
What's the original motion on the floor?
The original motion is for it to go to non, go through finance, go to nonprofit, and then go to opioid, then to budget, is the motion.
And everybody that spoke before me is opposed to that, right?
Yes, they would like for it to go to opioid, then to budget.
So would it be appropriate then to withdraw that motion and come up with a new motion?
I would draw the motion or I will step in amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. But we don't have a, there's not a, an amendment yet, so if that's something, I mean, I can't tell you what to do, but...
I withdraw the motion.
Madam Mayor, I know you...
Just listening to your discussion and to Commissioner Vandergriff's point, if we go back and we look when we first were notified that we would be receiving opioid funds, one of the first things, I mean, I remember this discussion, we talked about how are we going to tackle this? And the idea was put forth to do a task force to go out or, or accept folks to come to meetings and learn what the needs of the community are. I think this commission and the folks that were part of that task force did a great job. I think you could go with the change, this is just my two cents, you could go with the changes you've made with your resolution, but just add a couple things in there, that you're moving the task force to a committee status. It's already been operating as a committee. I mean, Operations Committee is a subcommittee of your whole. The task force wasn't a task force appointed by me or anyone else, it was really operating as a subcommittee. So I would just formalize that, call it the, you know, put that as just a little small amendment in that resolution and make the change that it goes to that opioid committee. You may wanna put a term on it, though, you know, if you want it to be annual, or I, I don't know, do you do, you do all of your committees annually, don't you? Okay. That's just my two cents, and you could keep the resolution as it is.
All right, what's the will of the body? Commissioner Allen, are you withdrawing your motion?
I'm at the service of this committee, whatever would be easier for this committee, I can withdraw it, draw it, or make a change the mayor decided. Completely cooperating with whatever the body wants, with the body's suggestion, I can withdraw it or not.
I just think from a, from a, this is just me, but from a record-keeping and minute-keeping standpoint, I think it's clean to, to withdraw it and create a new motion.
Yes, sir, I withdraw that motion.
All right. Commissioner McCamey.
No. What's your vote?
Are you making a motion, sir?
No.
Oh, okay. So we don't have a motion or a second on the floor anymore?
I'll give a run at it. Let me look at the original.
So we're looking at Section B, Number Two.
Application.
Where it says, "Application is forwarded to the opioid settlement task force." The original said, "or nonprofit committee," but I believe the amendment was, in operations, was to put and/or?
No, just the word.
Just and?
Just, just nonprofit.
Okay, just nonprofit, so it took out opioid task force. Okay.
Let me make a run then. I think part, part of my motion is going to be to maybe officially rename the opioid settlement task force to the opioid, what did I say here? Settlement Committee. Yes, that's to get rid of task force. I would also like to change the resolution to strike nonprofit committee. Yeah, nonprofit doesn't even need to be in that sentence anymore. And I, I think that, on Number Two, so we're gonna make two, two changes. Well, first we need to rename the task force to a committee, and I think, I'll take that on here, rename the task force the opioid settlement committee, okay? With member terms lasting a year. Application is to be forwarded to the opioid settlement task force committee. What's the rest of that sentence? Who may conduct interviews, obtain additional information from candidates, and make, and make decisions on, on funding. Does that sound good? Okay.
Would it be?
That's it now.
Would it be make decision, make recommendations of funding?
Oh, that's right, to be forwarded to Budget Committee. Right.
I'll second the motion.
Sorry, Annette.
Annette, we'll feed you Hoskins after this. All right, so the motion on the floor is to change it from opioid task for, settlement task force to opioid settlement committee, and to remove nonprofit from the ref, the, the...
To any reference to...
Yes, any reference, and opioid settlement committee will make, there will make recommendations to the Budget Committee for approval for funding, and then up the chain. Is that right?
That's great.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner McCamey, is there any discussion on that motion? Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm in full support of the changes, I just wanted to make a comment about ASAP of Anderson County. I hope that the committee will continue, and I know you have been, to work with ASAP of Anderson County, they've been fully engaged, I think coalition started in 2008, and then 2010, they got their first federal fund in, so I'd like to see ASAP continue to be involved in whatever capacity we can, and I certainly would like to see us support them financially with those funds in any way we can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner Foster made a motion to set a Strategic Planning Committee meeting in January with law director's approval and continue to meet yearly, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger, motion passed, six yes, two no, afford full commission for approval.
All right, we have, excuse me. All right, do we have a motion and a second on this recommendation? We have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Varren, is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Well, no. All right, motion carries. All right.
Commissioner Jaeger made a motion to abolish the Animal Care Advisory Committee, seconded by Commissioner Foster, motion passed unanimously, afford full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Is there any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna be supporting this motion to abolish the Animal Care Advisory Committee, the committee had been in existence for about over two years or so to help alleviate any concerns that there may have been, or try to resolve issues, resolutions, support, what have you of the Anderson County Animal Shelter. I just want everybody at home to know that going forward, you have any issues, you got complaints, the Advisory Committee will not be available for that, obviously, we're gonna terminate it, but the mayor, she is in control of the shelter, and her department is in control of the shelter, so anything that comes up, contact the mayor's office and the shelter. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Anderson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have a way to notify the citizens that are on the committee, or do we send an email or official letter? How do we do that when we dissolve the committee?
Mr. Chairman?
I haven't sent out a notice of such per se, but in trying to get together a quorum for it, I only had like three responses, and that's, that's basically why we're abolishing the committee to begin with. So, I mean, we could certainly send out a letter advising people if you think that's appropriate.
Yeah, I, I just, I didn't know what, if there was anything official that we did or, or not. I assume they'll probably watch the commission meetings, I don't know.
All right. Commissioner Allen, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, would you speak to that issue, if you don't mind, abolishing the...
Some of the discussion we had at the Operations Committee, I think, I, I can't remember if it was Commissioner McCamey who brought the idea up, I think so, about kind of reinvigorating the task force idea, so we're gonna look at doing that again with Commissioner Wondell, Commissioner Varren, Commissioner McCamey, and then looking back at that old structure and use that as a mechanism to help facilitate.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes the action items to be sent full commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, no other committees, no unfinished or new. Commissioner Allen, under announcements, you have an announcement you'd like to...
Yes, I would like to announce that the Oak Valley Baptist Church is hosting their sixth annual Community Christmas Store on December 14th, 2024. The goal of the Christmas store is to empower, to empower underprivileged families in the community and give parents an opportunity to involve, and to be involved in selecting gifts for their children during the holidays. And you can donate by sending donations to the Oak Valley Baptist Church in the amount of between $2 and $15, and this will allow parents to make selections they feel each child will enjoy the most. And parents will be able to purchase a, purchase one large gift at about $15 and four small gifts under $5. So the gifts ranging from, will range from small new dolls, board games, bikes, makeup, jewelry, hair care, clothes, shoes, and, and electronics. So opportunities exist in every part of the Christmas store, and here are just a few ways in which you can help. Sponsor a specific child group, age group, and also they will be taking corporate sponsorships of $500 or more, and monetary donation to the Christmas store can be mailed to 194 Hampton Road, Oak Ridge, Tennessee, 37830.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize I didn't get in time for the unfinished business part, but I thought it might be worth mentioning, Special Counsel Brooks sent out a email with a detachment for the Ethics Commission, I think the mayor and legal services advisory, we had made some discussions about previously, a month or two ago, about if we're meeting the Ethics Commission requirements through the state, Special Counsel Brooks gave us his opinion, which we seem to be, he had a couple of recommendations in there. Something that caught my eye was this TCA Code 5-5-112, Public Chapter 798 adds additional procedures safeguards against conflicts of interest when a county legislative body is voting on a matter which increases pay or benefits of a commission member who is a, who is also a county employee or whose spouse is a county employee, and then it has Items 1 through 4, the membership is not permitted to vote, the vote must be recorded electronically. If the vote could involve a conflict prior, the vote being announced, chairperson shall ask the member of the legislative body if the member voted violation of the status. If the chairperson finds the member voted in violation, then the member's vote should be voided. I just think we all should look at that, and I didn't know if Special Counsel Brooks had anything to add to this.
Some of this came out of the meeting that took place at the Museum of Appalachia where they went through some of the legislative update this year, and I wanted to just get that out to commission because it is a change from last year. I may not have done as clear a job trying to summarize it, but that's basically it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Val.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being a county employee, of course, Mr. Brooks, this strikes close from home, and you're exactly right, seems like the state legislature plays follow the bouncing ball with this rule every year when it comes out. Matter of fact, there's been several attempts in Nashville down through the years where county employees cannot even serve on the county legislative bodies. Obviously, I don't agree with that for several reasons, it never passes out of committee, and I'm appreciative of that. However, the last year's rule was, all I had to do was remind everybody on commission that I am a county employee every time... every time we got ready to vote on anything that would increase my pay. So if I understand what Commissioner Wondell was speaking to, and what you were speaking to, now that's changed again to where I can't even vote on it at all, is my understanding?
That is the way I read it.
Go ahead.
I think that speaks more, the statute also, the modification speaks also to, if you were to vote, it gives the other commission members maybe an opportunity to say, no, you shouldn't have. And once you're past the vote, and that opportunity, and the vote's recorded, that's it. That's it.
Okay. So one thing that I ask your predecessor, and I would like for you to research as well, in the past, I have attempted to exempt myself from any pay raises, requested the sheriff direct the Finance Department not to include me on a pay raise, so that I could still vote for it for the other county employees.
Okay.
If you would, please research that and see if I'm on legal standing ground by doing that as well.
All right, Commissioner, we certainly will.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Wondell?
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, I want to make sure that everyone knows that Commissioner Val has always been up front and above board, and in no way, shape, or form am I trying to discredit him. He's always been very, he's been on top of this more than anyone, I'd say. So I appreciate the way he's always handled it. I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, and I don't want to cause any issues going into the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McCamey?
Yeah, at one time, a portion of that said the salary would have to stand alone in the budget cycle. As long as that, his salary is not, if it's lumped in with all the other officers' salaries, it should not affect him. I don't know if that has changed or not, but I know at one time, it had to stand alone, that was back when I was a county employee, that my salary had to stand alone if, if I was not allowed to vote. It would have to be there by itself. As long as it's in with everybody else's salary in that department, it didn't matter. So you might want to research that also.
Okay. Certainly.
All right. Mayor Frank?
Yeah, just under New Business, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make you aware that I had requested some guidance from Mr. Brooks regarding aid to counties in emergencies. As you know, we did the water program. Those were private trucks that where citizens collected water. Those drivers took the equipment and needs up to Cock County or to the designated facilities. But I'm going to distribute the memo from Mr. Brooks, and Mr. Brooks, you may want to just comment on this, but just if we do use resources, some of these things are covered under TMA. So for instance, we had a member of EMA that was requested to be on site in Unicoi County and work there in Unicoi County. That is covered under TMA. Those wages will be reimbursed. In this particular case, just, you know, the county can, if during a state of emergency, which was declared in this case, we can assist other counties. We just need to document something according to Mr. Brooks and have an amount. So we have a template, for instance, from Knox County, where when they used the helicopter to locate folks, they did that for a dollar. But it was just something to formalize the agreement. So I just wanted to let you all know that we would be distributing that and just getting that information out, and that way we can make sure that we stay in compliance. So.
Sounds good. Don't to call her on the spot, but Ms. Bocheers from Congressman Flashman's office is here. Do you have any announcements you'd like to make?
No.
All right. All right. Seeing no more announcements, just a reminder, we have a joint planning meeting, if you forgot. We all agreed last month. But just FYI, we're probably supposed to start at 11. It's 11:10, so maybe about a 10, 15-minute break for that, but if not, we will stay adjourned.